Seeing the appointed time has arrived. Seeing that the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up the Wednesday, January 25th, 2023 meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board, being held in the Events Room in Mashpee Public Library, 64 State Street, Mashpee, Massachusetts. The time is 6:00 p.m. I'd like to welcome everybody and remind everybody that we're being video crafted or possibly photo crafted tonight. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, one God, individual liberty and justice for all.
So we have one item on our agenda. It's the Local Comprehensive Plan Update with Weston Sampson. We have Ashlyn Fisher.
Sweet.
Sorry. Sweet. From Weston Sampson here tonight. And if it's okay with everybody, I'm just going to hand it all over to Ashlyn.
So Evan is going to run the slides. And we wanted to give you an update this evening. So the agenda for the discussion tonight will be, one, just give you an update. Two would be to actually work on the draft vision statement that you have.
I should need to have a overview.
Thank you. Thanks. The third will be to give you an overview of goals, policies, and actions, kind of how those all work together, how those will end up in an implementation chapter. Give I've given you an example, you know, how that's all going to fit together. We can kind of talk through that. We've also assigned you a little bit of homework to take those draft goals, policies, and actions for each chapter, work on them independently, take a look through them, give us some edits. Evan will kind of organize that. And then also wanted to just do a brief overview of survey results with you. Just highlighted a couple of the survey responses in here, but we can talk a little bit about how the survey results will get incorporated into the overall plan and then a couple of next steps. So just to keep you guys informed how we're moving everything forward. So an update on the project overall. You have another set of existing conditions, chapters that have been provided to you. Those are in a track change form digitally so that you can see the updates that have been made based on comments that have received both by the planning board and by other staff that have provided their review. We have started to add the Issues and Opportunities section to each chapter. And what we're looking to do there is to tie together the existing conditions analysis. We jumped on the other third. Tie together the existing conditions that we've laid out. Looking at the survey results, looking at the outcome. Feel very important.
Yeah.
Looking at the outcome of the workshops that have happened and trying to synthesize all of that information to tie together the existing conditions portion and the implementation section, which outlines your goals, policies, and actions to move forward. So other sections that we're working on, we're doing a summary of public engagement. Evan has provided us with all of the information from the sessions that he did outside of the ones that Weston Sampson helped facilitate. We're working on an introduction chapter that will kind of lay out the plan initially, provide some demographic information about the town, and introduce the concept of a comprehensive plan before getting into the meat of the document. And then we've started to lay out the implementation table. We're not going to fully populate that until we have refined those goals, policies, and actions more carefully, receive your feedback, and then we would those will go into an actual table. So we wanted to start with the vision statement. This is essentially what a page might look like in the document. We worked with Evan to, you know, introduce what a vision is, provide a draft vision statement, and then provide some guiding principles. So this is in draft form. Certainly, this is up for discussion. We'd like to hear back from you. We think this is, you know, a pretty important page in the document. It's very high level. It's an overarching vision that everything else kind of leads up to. So we've given you an idea of what this might look like in the actual document itself. And then on the next slide, we have the text of that vision statement. We can go kind of sentence by sentence and talk through this. Evan's prepared to make changes on the screen as we talk about it. So we're interested certainly in hearing back from you guys on how you might want to edit this vision statement.
Do you want to talk vision statement? Everyone wants to go through the whole presentation?
We can come back to this and use it again if you'd like to. Or we can not necessarily use this as working time. You guys can edit the vision statement independently and come back. The challenge with that more so is that we're only hearing from people individually. This is something that I think overall should be, you know, something that everyone kind of agrees on together. Happy to do, you know, whatever you think works best.
I mean, what slides do you need to go through?
Um.
Ten.
Yeah.
So maybe, maybe finish the PowerPoint and then go back to another slide.
Whatever you say.
Yes.
Sure. So give you a little background on goals, policies, and actions. Goals are really high level. We're talking about desired outcomes. They're simple. They're more general. They're more aspirational in nature. A policy would be that kind of next level down. It's a statement that's going to guide that municipal decision-making. It's going to help decision-makers figure out how they're getting to goals. They're designed to help achieve goals. And then the action statements are the specific things. Those are the measurable, you know, actions that the town can take that are going to be implementation in nature. There are things that you're going to act, the town is actually going to, you know, to do to bring the municipality closer to achieving the overall goal. So it's basically how it's structured. Does anyone have any questions on that before we keep going?
I don't think you're done with the PowerPoint presentation.
Okay. That's fine, too.
Excellent.
Yep. So this is an example of what your overall implementation table might look like. And this is really kind of simplified. And there's several different ways to structure these. And that's one of the things that we'd like to get some feedback from you. This is an example goal from the Natural Resources Chapter. And like I said, there's a couple of ways to do this. Oftentimes, you will see a goal statement. And then underneath that goal statement, you'll see one or a series of policy statements that are associated with that goal. And then you'll see a series of action items that are associated with those policies. And then typically, you'll see who's responsible for initiating those actions, who the support parties are that are going to support whoever's initiating those actions, what the timeframe for implementation is. And then in some of the more detailed implementation plans, you might see something like a column that identifies a cost. And that's done by, usually done by like dollar signs. So $1 sign might mean up to $10,000. And then you might have $2 signs that are like, you know, 10 to 30 or whatever the range is, is up to the community. We are going to design the implementation table however you guys would like to design it. The other option is not to tie every policy to a goal and every action to a policy, but in within the chapter itself, to just make the general goal statements at the top, make the policy statements underneath, and then list all the actions. One of the ways to do that, to make sure that we are, because in reality, what you want to make sure is that every action can go back to a policy and every policy can go back to a goal, at least one. Sometimes they're done, you know, you might have a policy that has several actions that tie back to it. But when you don't, when you don't structure the table so that it's clear that way, there's a way that you could do. We can do that in the introduction to every chapter. We can put a summary in the front that makes those general goal statements and identifies the policies that are associated and the actions that are associated. And so your table can be a little more straightforward in just stating goals, policies, and actions. And we can create that relationship in the actual text of the introduction. It's really up to you guys what you prefer for structure. We have done an implementation table. So typically, implementation tables, you see them, they end up being in landscape, which, you know, causes a reader to have to kind of flip things around unless, you know, in a digital format, it doesn't matter as much. But we've also done implementation tables that we have fit on portrait. They have a little bit less information. But one of the kind of optional things I think you can think about is, do you want to have a column in there that identifies a cost when this might be 10 years down the road? And is that cost still going to be the same timeframe? I mean, still going to be within that same budgetary, you know, range? Maybe you don't want to put costs in there. We've had, we've done things like taking the implementation table. This lives in your local comprehensive plan. But you can take your implementation table and pull that out into a working document. And you can organize that. You can prioritize that. You can move those things around so that the planning department have. This one lives statically in the comprehensive plan. But Evan could have a working document that's based off of that implementation table that would allow him to do things like prioritize when these things happen. A lot of kind of priorities are based on funding. So if funding becomes available or you know that, you know, the next budget season, you can ask for $10,000 to implement something, that may go to the top of your list. But it gives you the ability to have more flexibility and have this document be static. And maybe the costs associated and the prioritization get moved over into that more dynamic document that's kept by the planning department. That could be, you know, biannual review by the planning board. You can reorganize things. You can change things around as necessary. It still relate back to your comprehensive plan, but it gives you a lot of flexibility. So we've also done that. And that's an option that you can consider. I've just given you an idea on the right-hand side, how we've kind of organized this. This is the basic framework for the implementation table that lives in a portrait format. What we've also done previously is we've identified overarching themes. And we've worked into those overarching themes, which actions tie back to a specific theme. So you could have a theme related to water quality. And every time you have an action item that would be related to water quality, there's a box that's checked. I can give you a better example. This doesn't show that, but I can give you a better example of that. So the way we've done it here is the lead party. Instead of having two columns, one for lead and one for support, we've had responsible party and the lead is involved. And the supports are in regular text underneath so that it's all in one place. We don't have to take up extra space with two columns. Typically, a short term is something that's considered zero to three years. A medium term is something that would be like the four to seven year range. And a long term is something that's eight years or more. And those are flexible. We can move those around as you see appropriate for the actions that you come up with. There's also the category of ongoing. And that's typically used to identify something that's continuous and that you don't have a defined end and beginning. You can also use ongoing along with another timeframe. So we could say, for instance, we had a short-term action. We're going to implement, we're going to initiate it in the short term, but it's going to result in something that continues beyond that timeframe. So it could be short-term slash ongoing. So typically, how we structure this is that the timeframe, the responsible party, and all of those components are defined in text, probably in front of that implementation table so that it's clear that the reader, when they go to that implementation table, they understand, you know, what they're looking at. And you don't have to answer these questions now. These are things for you guys to think about. Evan, I think you could probably follow up with them and have a subsequent conversation where some of these decisions are made. And then he just lets us know and that determines how we format these things going forward. So like I said, we gave you guys a little bit of homework. We gave you a draft Word document that listed all the goals, policies, and actions. And right now, the way that they're structured is to just list the goals, list the policies, list the actions. They're not separated and tied together. We'd like you guys to look at those, provide edits to those in a, in a, I mean, a written format is certainly the easiest if you can use track changes. If not, and that's not convenient, we will work with whatever format you provide us with. Evan is going to collect those from all of you. He's going to consolidate similar responses. So if multiple people made like, this needs to change to this, that would be kind of consensus and we would make that change. Any significant changes that really kind of change something, change a policy or completely change an action or even add an action would be brought back to the board and then as a group, kind of go through those and everyone comes to an agreement. And then he would return those to us and we will input them into whatever format it is that he finally decide on.
Just one thing I could to note to the board. Do you have the Word documents, the initial format that track change is on for purposes of this meeting? For the purpose of this meeting, you got a clean copy of the track change turned off so you can mark that one up. If you want us to print for you the track change's version so you can mark that up too, we'll print that. But first, I got a clean copy in your back end. Excellent.
Yep. So we wanted to do just like a real brief overview of survey results. We have the survey results in a Excel file. We also have them where you can go back into Survey Monkey and we can use these cute little charts to identify how questions were answered. So there were 49 questions in total. We had 620 responses, which is great. It was, I think it was about, was it about six weeks that the survey was open?
I think five weeks.
Five weeks. So it was open for about five weeks for people to log on and record their responses. And so I've just given you a couple of examples. We had the first question in the survey was how would you rate the quality of life in Mashpee? Overwhelmingly, people said either very good or good. In your experiences, the quality of life in Mashpee improved, stayed the same, or gotten worse? And overwhelmingly, close to 60% of people had said stayed the same. It improved, was, has a slight edge, should it have gotten worse? Which only came in at about 28%. Do you believe that Mashpee has a need for more attainable, affordable, and workforce housing? Obviously, overwhelmingly, 70% of people said yes. Should an update to the town's wastewater management plan include plants of sewer around the freshwater bodies to address phosphorus loading? And again, overwhelmingly, just over, close to 71% said yes. Should you support the update of the bicycle and pedestrian plan for Mashpee that would map out potential connections and prioritize projects for future funding? And again, oh, close to 70% who support that initiative. So what I did in the survey, obviously, there's a lot more to that survey that's more than my questions. I just gave you a couple of them, choosing from like different topic areas, one on housing, one on wastewater, you know, one on bike and pedestrian, just to give you a sense of what people were responding with. Also, there are some questions where the responses are, the options for responses were very long. And so the table, you know, is way too long to put on a page. A couple of thoughts on the survey itself. We're going to have a chapter upfront in the document that provides an overview of public participation. And obviously, the survey is a large piece of that public participation process. So we will provide a more detailed summary of the survey in that section. And then what we could do is, as an appendix, we could use all those tables, lay those out, and those can be appended to the document so that at the back of the document, if somebody is interested in more specifically all of the questions and all of the answers, they could go to that as a resource and look through that. We've also done brief paragraph summaries in each chapter to highlight certain things that came out of the survey that were related to that specific chapter. So we can do all of those things or only if things you guys feel are necessary for the chapter. So in terms of next steps, we are, those are still working drafts. We are still moving those forward. We've given Evan a punch list of a couple of things that are outstanding. He's helping us resolve those items. Those will continue to, well, those chapters will continue to evolve. We are in the process of giving you those goals, policies, and actions for your review and input. We have begun an implementation table, but we don't want to go too far. We want to make sure that we get the format that you like and that we don't start to populate it until we know more finalized goals, policies, and actions or we're just going to do that work all over again. And we are working on updating the maps to bring those back to you to kind of look a final review.
And 90° turn or?
What's that?
90° turn?
Yes. So that's where we are.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. And on these policies, I was gonna, and this is something.
Is on the microphone?
Would you want to take this back?
I don't think you can.
On the policies, I think maybe the planning board, I was gonna put the priorities like, like I said, for water, you might have cleaned up, populated the bay first and then go down from there the next major item that we want to do. Is that how we're gonna list them? And the most important first and the least important at the last one?
I guess it's.
Go back to that screen.
I'm gonna miss them.
You want us to table marriage?
That table. So, so right. So you're saying that you want, you, you want us to decide and order it in some way of.
So you can work on, at least the, the worst one first. Because like I said, money's gonna be the problem with this. So I don't want to go to, I gotta, with the money, where it's gonna get the most money for the dollar.
So my, and this is your plan. So you decide. But I'm going to recommend that you consider not necessarily prioritizing them in the comprehensive plan itself, but pulling that table out, like I said, into a working document where you then create your priorities and you could consistently amend it depending on political will, available funding, whatever comes up. It could be a continually kind of like renewed document that whenever appropriate, the planning board pulls it out. And I would suggest at least on a, you know, biannual basis, every six months, you pull this thing out, you talk about what's going on, you think about what funding is available, and you reorder things based on present circumstances.
Well, that makes more sense. The plan is the plan. The, what we're gonna do perhaps will be separate.
Yeah. The other way you could do it is do it through your timeframes.
All right.
Right? We prioritize by giving the ones that are the most priority of the structure. Do you know?
Yeah, I mean, typically, the way we look at short-term, medium-term, and long-term is you're thinking about a couple of different things at the same time. One, and I think probably the most important, is funding because everything requires funding. The second part of it is, how large of a task is this? Is this something that, you know, because I, you don't want to set yourself up for a situation where you're taking on all the big stuff at the same time because you just, it's too many balls in the air. It won't work. So if it's a smaller task, typically, it costs less money also. Maybe those become the shorter term and you can do a bunch of short-term at the same time and throw in a couple of medium-term with that or one long-term with that so that you don't become overwhelmed with just too much stuff at once. You know, I would, I would suggest taking on like one long-term, two long-term, and then initiating those like.
But that's what I was trying to get me to prioritize. I have another question. When I was reading what you sent us in the survey, there was not one mention of farm-based code. How come that put into this thing now? Because I don't really understand this farm-based code. I don't know why it was put in there.
The draft goals, policies, and actions you have before were composed within a variety of considerations. One, the 1998 comprehensive plan, and the actions contained in that plan that need to carry over the new plan. Second, things that were mentioned during workshops, engagement that came up as priorities that weren't included in the 1998 plan that emerged and need to be included in the plan. And other actions that were more specific that I presented as a draft in consideration of planning best practice. But farm-based code or any other regulatory mechanism is a consideration for you to make, and you do not need to include.
Okay.
I was just trying to throw everything at the wall. So if anything, you have an opportunity to be discussed.
Because I've been reading the pros and cons about the farm-based. And it said, out of the whole United States, 280 cities, towns, and communities doing a farm-based. And then there are also that sometimes when you go that way, it takes much longer to get the process done because there's all regulations and the after meeting stuff.
Yeah, it's a big transition and not one that the town has to, has to do or has to consider. Which one I would suggest, but one you do not have to.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, so do you, do you guys wanna make some general comments and then go to the vision statement? Do you wanna do that? Continue on with what Dennis, Dennis made some general comments?
Take the microphone.
So, what I'm proposing to the, to the board is, Dennis made some general comments on the list of, uh, goals, policies, and actions. Is there anybody else that would like to make their general comment about that this time?
I like the form, I like that form. Because I think it shows you everything that you wanna see in one place. It essentially talks about goals. And I like the idea, I don't particularly like it on knowing there's any kind of timeline. Because that means we'll get to it by the next comprehensive plan.
So would you like annually on there instead of...
No, I don't like, I think that's talked quite specifically about. They kind of need to wire it up.
I, I agree with you on that. And my recommendation, and I didn't do this in the example I gave you, but my recommendation, because I, I unfortunately chose the poor option to give you something to initiate. But I would recommend that if you're gonna use ongoing, that you also use either short-term, medium-term, or long-term for initiating the project. The idea behind ongoing is that it doesn't end. It's not like, it's not a change to your zoning ordinance that has a finite beginning and end. It's a program or an initiative that you start, but you don't wanna put an end on it. It's something that the town wants to adopt, it's like a long-term policy. So I would try to always pair ongoing with something else for that exact reason.
Yeah, but that's, I get you. I like this particular format that you can see everything that you wanna see at one point. And I, so I, I like that idea.
Okay.
I like the way you did it. I mean, frankly, Dennis said, it would be nice to be able to prioritize everything. But, but funding, funding always tells you that that's not gonna happen. So, but I think you guys did a great job. That's what I wanna summarize what I said.
Thank you. I, I do also like the, the general format that you have. But clarifying, if a policy has more than one goal, are you going to just keep listing the goals? Oh, I mean, sorry, the actions under the, and assigned responsibilities?
Yes, so the...
Not priority, just, you know, everything is in this, this camp.
Right, so there, there are, there are benefits and drawbacks to both setups. I, this is just my preference. I prefer this type where we list the goals, we list the policies, we list the actions. We use the text of the document to tie that all together so that the reader understands how everything is related. When you separate them in the table, what it ends up, it, it becomes, it becomes a question of like, well, does this action fit with this policy or this policy? And do I list it under policy 1.2 or policy 1.4? Because it really, it really goes back to either or both of those. Because it, it may achieve two things at once. And then it becomes a question. And then if the question is like, do I repeat it in this one and then repeat it again? And we wanna avoid repetition. So in this format, it's just clean. It's all your goals, it's all your policies, and then it's your listed actions. And you don't have to kind of sift through determining, you know, which ties back to which. You can go to the test for that piece of it. But it's entirely up to you how you would wanna do that.
Well, I, I hate the, you know, one action may satisfy several policies.
Yeah.
And certainly, there would be a, a principal policy that you list the actions under. I would recommend a tie-in for each action possibly to another policy by footnote. It's footnote 1, 2, 3 applies to, you know, other policies along the way. So there is a, you know, a tie-in, maybe not repeating it purposely under each policy, but at least footnoting that this one takes as well to other policies.
This is really good, I like this. It's really heavy duty because I have to think, is that a goal or is that a policy? You know, on each point, and it's, it's, it's kind of tough.
It is. The distinction is, is minor in those.
Yeah, that's the thing. You know, I thought I wrote a policy, but no, that's really a goal, or vice versa. So it's, it's complicated. I, you know, know the, the old 1998, when I read that one a long time ago. And I always go to certain chapters that relate to the planning board. I would like to know if the goals of the 1998 LCP, if a specific goal hasn't been met, could we list, we list that this didn't, this didn't get met, could we list on the other side of the other column, what goal, what are we doing in furtherance of that goal? Because I feel, this is what, it concerns me, that this could wind up in the dustbin if we don't... You're, you're making it happen for us by doing it this way. Because you're putting, putting restrictions on it. Okay, you're the responsible party now. You've gotta act because that's what this thing says. So that is really good. But we don't want to have this wind up, you know, just getting slumped off, which I think the 1998 in a lot of ways did get slumped off.
It did.
Right?
Yeah, yeah.
So would that be too much trouble to do that?
I just wanna make sure I'm understanding what you're...
Okay, I'm trying to understand myself.
Well, I just wanna, and Evan, you can chime in here. Because Evan had a lot to do with, with drafting these. Any, we looked at the 1998 plan, and we looked at the goals, policies. They're not, they're not, they're not listed as goals, policies, and actions. They're just listed.
No, I know.
But we did look at those. Then Evan kind of did an assessment of like, did this happen? If it didn't happen, why didn't it happen? Let's move it forward and keep it, and identify specific actions that will achieve it. So those things shouldn't have gotten lost.
You're saying they're in this plan?
They should be, yeah. Am I, did I categorize that well or explain that well?
You do, yes.
Okay.
So we made sure...
I thought we had a list of those goals.
You do, I forgot.
Okay. So, now that Alex, our intern, escorted him?
To graduate, yes.
Yes.
He, um, he, he, I, we asked that question a long time ago. I wanted to see, remember, I wanted to see all, just to not have to read every page of the current LCP, but a chart. And then different categories, right? Our, our chapters are gonna have different titles, right? But I think he typed in all those goals into a big chart so we could compare them to the new ones.
Is that chart available?
I'm gonna make it available to the board. I'll bring it to you. And I think what we're gonna end up finding is that a lot of the high-level goals, certainly some of the high-level goals, many if not almost all of the prior, uh, policies will have, will translate nearly directly over to the new plan.
Right, they may be worded differently, but I think the spirit remains in terms of what, what the intent was.
And then a lot of the actions, you'll know, will have carried over too. Many are new, but many are directly connected to the 1998 document as well.
The actions that didn't go in the 1998 and are planned to go in this one?
Say that again, Mary.
The actions will carry over whether they were, whether the actions happened or not.
If they were...
They haven't happened, they're gonna happen.
That's right. If those actions were supported by the engagement that we had done in the survey, then they carry over. I think there was only one action in the transportation section that I did recommend carrying over, and it was the wiring of 28151 to 401.
Can you explain the reason why wiring is not good?
Indeed. So that's, in my recollection, that's the only one I suggested dropping and not carrying over that wasn't accomplished. Otherwise, all the intersection improvements from the transportation section, all the natural resources, goals, and policies you'll see traded.
That's great, yeah. Just don't wanna lose anything, yes, we keep that over. I really like that comment about the theme, you know, putting a theme, like a symbol, next to something so that when it's, you know, when it helps with our water quality, you drop in the, the water drop, you know?
Alright, yes.
When, when it, when it helps with housing, you put in a civil, a little house, economic development, I don't know. I think to use the money sign, but it might be the best one.
I think that's a nice way where you have multiple actions that support multiple policies and goals. So having to insert redundancies throughout each chapter, you can identify that that action is really supporting best this particular goal and policy. But I can make that connection between goals and policies and other chapters using symbology.
So it mostly identifies, or, or the action is for housing, but there's a water implication there, that comes next.
We put a house in and drop the...
Consumption with a tree.
Yeah, I think it's important to reduce redundancies, but we can draw those connections using tools like symbols.
And then community, little people.
I don't have it in the slide, but I'm looking for an example that I can show you.
So that's four things that we said right now. Housing, water, economic development, community. Is there anything else that's jumping out at people?
I like, uh, can we say that if we do this policy, we're gonna get the most out of it?
Yes.
You know, like, add a rate. Like if this policy goes, if this policy goes through, we're gonna get the most, the town's gonna benefit the most out of it if we implement this policy. If there's some type of rate, we can do it.
I'm just not 100% certain I'm following this.
So let's say that there was an action that had all four symbols next to it.
Yes.
That might, you know, people looking at it and they're like, gee, let's go after that one.
Yes, it would certainly be able to describe in, in, in visual form.
They'd gotta be, they'd for the people.
You get a strong return on your investment with certain goals, certain actions across multiple subcategory categories.
I'd like to see something like that. Apparently, the people in the town think, oh, this is important.
Yeah, we think that's a good idea.
To address your question, are there any other symbols that may be applicable? I would think transportation, and I think mostly the technology symbol. You know, are we doing electric cars, uh, doing the internet? That was not necessarily there in 1998, and...
Yeah, and then, and sustainability.
It'd be a system for sustainability.
The Earth, I don't know.
I'll get it.
Yeah, it's up to you.
So sustainability, technology, sustainability.
I have it on the screen, but I can't.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Did you get those off? Mm-hmm, thank you.
I figure we'll have to be prudent to have a, some symbol relate to each element of chapter of the LCP.
That's another way to do it, yeah.
Can I show you an example?
Yeah, it's on my screen, but...
I'm not even calling it up here. We can show you.
So this is an implementation table that has...
Yeah.
The themes across the top. Those themes are described above in terms of what they are. And then... You come down, and the boxes are checked. I've actually redone this, so those get moved down. But the boxes get checked for what theme is being...
Very nice. That's very nice, that's great.
So people...
That might be a simple concept.
That's right.
We will start to format an implementation table, and maybe we can bring you back or send you back a, a link one just so you can tell us how you feel about the structure before we start to put things into it.
Great. So my general comments is, you know, I just wanna thank everybody. As, as chair, I just wanna thank everybody who's participated in this process, the process of this part. Whether you attended a workshop, one of our five workshops, one of them was even virtual, one of our focus groups, or took the survey. This important work would not be possible without you. All comments are important and are gonna be carefully considered. We ask you to stay involved and connected as we bring your comments and opinions forward into the update of the Mashpee Global Comprehensive Plan. I'm glad that you had a reference to the survey and the workshops. There's a lot of data there. I, I, I received it from the planning department, and I'm most appreciative of everybody who recorded stuff. I think a lot of the work was done by Weston and Sampson. And I really appreciate, we are, there is a little bit more, so there's a few more focus groups that are being typed up. So I'm looking forward to those. And I'm looking forward to that robust analysis and summary of all of that. It's kind of like that primary backup of, of what's in the plan. So we need it. I, um, I, I think that we should, uh, before going into some general comments about the goals, policies, and actions, I don't want everybody to have read any of them. But maybe, do you guys wanna look at that vision statement and give some comments on that? And I'll start. So I, I'm, I'm not the best person to tell you. But it's a good vision statement. I, I like the vision, the, the current vision statement of the Board of Slockman. I like the current vision statement of the LCP. And I like this one too, so I just like them all. The one thing that I wanted to ask Ashley is that there's kind of a trend, and we were saying senior citizens is a trend of referring to that age group as older adults. I don't know if you've ever, let's talk to think about.
Lynn Waterman has told me that before.
Huh?
Lynn Waterman, former COA director, is saying.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a trend to call them older adults. I don't know how many times you've used the word senior in all of this and what, what it would take to replace that with older adults. But I like that term. And I, I mean, I love the sentence, "We envision a future where our children may realize they have no potential and where our older adults can comfortably and safely enjoy the fruits of their labor." I do think we need to put something in there about young adults. That something like, "Our young adults stay." Like, what's the biggest issue when I think about young adults? They don't stay on the game. So it's like, my, one of my visions of Mashpee is that our young, our young people stay, right?
Mary, was it older adults you said?
Yeah, instead of where our older citizens can... You would just, instead of senior citizens, you would use older adults.
I know, so...
Can't you talk about all ages can come to me and say things during the future?
Well, you haven't, no, I think, I think that... That, that, so that's, so my vision of, and maybe other people can think about, you know, the young adult population, like the young, I don't mean, I mean, not young adult, like 14, 15, I mean, people who just graduated college, that kind of stuff.
We, we could add something in the middle of that sentence. So it says, "We envision a future where our children may safely, well, they realize their maximum potential. Our young adults, something, and then our, and our older adults can come..." And then you've got to cover all three stages of life.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna challenge you. We're gonna have each generation. So...
Got it.
You know, so these young people stay, that's how I see it. I think the parents of young children are a significant population in Mashpee. They're so busy, we don't hear from them. But I think that my vision for them is that their lives aren't so crazy, right? And I don't know how to express that. Middle-aged people are a different group than our older adults are, are senior citizens too. And I, I, I think we need to work that, that each, each generation should get a little plug in there. And that was my, that was my only comment, otherwise I, I'm okay. I do have to say that...
I'm getting a little bit...
No, 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 you can...
That's right, I'm like, I don't mean...
But I do have to say that, um, having, having the analysis of the survey results and the workshops are super important in order to kind of find... But anyways, I don't know if anybody else wants to say something about the analysis.
I, I have to wait till, until, you know, Ted Wadley, senior citizen.
You didn't, no, I don't.
Okay, no, I... Let me just read this one sentence. I'm not gonna give the author, I am not the author, but...
Yeah, let's pass that aside.
Let's see what people think. Instead of that last sentence, here's a possible sentence. "By working together to heal the waters that have been polluted, the housing stock that has been neglected, and the ecosystems that have been disturbed, Mashpee will chart a bright and promising future for generations to enjoy." Uh, this is, that last sentence...
A very hot sentence.
Is, is a little gloomy. This is a little bit uplifting, but maybe you wanna...
Read that again.
"By working together to heal the waters that have been polluted, the housing stock that has been neglected, and the ecosystems that have been disturbed, Mashpee will chart a bright and promising future for generations to enjoy." All generations. For what? All generations.
How about all generations?
For all generations, yeah.
And all people?
For...
For all generations and all people.
For all generations and all people?
Yeah.
That's mine, I redone it. For, for, for everyone?
Nope, nope.
For all people?
Nope, I'll keep it, I retract my comments.
For generations to enjoy?
I retract my comments, okay?
Who likes for generations to enjoy? Or for all people to enjoy? What does the audience say?
For generations.
All generations? All generations to enjoy, okay?
That sentence drops out this, the kind of discussion about the relationship between town government and local government. I don't know if there's a logical place to have that survive in here or if it needs to...
They're people. We're talking about all people.
And we, we, it's mentioned in our second sentence.
Yeah.
So we're gonna take that out?
Uh, yeah, do you wanna keep it in?
I thought it was pretty good, but...
I, I mean, I think it, I think it's really good in healing the relationship between town government and the Mashpee Wakanah tribe. I think it's bold, and I like it.
I do, but...
Karen? Karen.
I'm not the author. We will disclose the author at the next meeting.
Well, I'm asking you.
What's that?
That phrase, and heal, and healing the relationship between town government and the Mashpee local tribe. You're comfortable with striking that? Because I'm really not, I think-
I think it's in the territory.
I think we can combine those two things. We can turn that sentence around and keep that piece in.
Thank you.
Yeah, because it concludes, it started at the beginning, now you're giving a conclusion.
The, the author of the sentence was Mr. Malone, who couldn't be here tonight. I wanted to make sure, I told him I would
Future, yeah.
share his comments with you there in writing on the table. He did write that last sentence. He did also just want me to share that he felt the tone of the drafted vision statement as you were first presented to it was less aspirational than, than he would refer to be. With particular concern over the word choice in the first, for your four lines. So I wanted to share his email to me and note his preference for using more aspirational language in his opinion. But I would also prefer you to look at that last sentence of the author.
I personally think the first sentence is very good because it's being very honest and forthright there. It passed injustices, but now we're going to change that. That's what we're saying. Where here, this is a little bit, "Mashpee is a vibrant, diverse community rooted in an ancient and proud past. Our vision for Mashpee recognizes honors and learns from the past." It's not specifically referencing a tribe. So if we want to recognize the tribe, we say it there and then we conclude it at the bottom.
Yeah.
I agree.
I think that's a very positive thing to say.
But this term?
Yeah, but recognize the tribe.
Yeah.
The way the language is much more uplifting. I mean, they both say the same thing, but moving it forward, I think that, you know, the vibrant diversity community is more a positive statement.
There's redundancy there. "Promising futures for future generations to enjoy." Mashpee will chart bright and promising-
How many generations?
For generations.
All generations.
All generations. Thank you, that's good. Ron, what do you think?
As far as Mash, uh, vision statement goes, I think it's way too long. But otherwise, it captures a lot.
Well, I wanted to know from the board that I-
The last sentence was way too long.
I think, and I drafted this first stab. And I think the 1998 vision statement resonated with a lot of people and continues to resonate with a lot of people. So I wanted to maintain the structure and integrity of the way that that, that statement was written. But bring it forward in consideration of the feedback we received. Kind of emerging statements, priorities that were contemplated in the old plan certainly. But I wanted, I thought it was important to call some of these things up more specifically. But I wanted to pay homage to the 98 statement.
It's difficult to do something much shorter when you want to sit. Well, we're talking something pretty damn important, so I agree with you. But what we're trying to accomplish just covers almost everything. As long as you make it uplifting, I think it's the right thing to go.
Mike, is, is the vision statement needs to cover it all and be an aspirational. Reducing redundancy and making the plan user-friendly and accessible is the higher priority. So we're going to be long-winded anywhere in this documentation here.
All right, so this, you're going to kind of tweak the phrases for generation.
Always continue to stew on this and let me know what you're thinking.
Good. Are you good if I give you some general comments about the goals, policies and actions?
Sure.
I really appreciate all the explanation that you gave, that you're looking at everything that's come your way. That, you know, there were some words in there that I didn't hear in any of our workshops or in the survey. And I'm like, my God, where did they come from? Now I, now I understand. Yeah. And that, you know, I, I sit on the community preservation committee, we're working on a plan. And we decided not to, not to write up any more policies, goals or actions because we have so many plans in town, right? That we're just going to reference them, right? And I think that's good, that's good. So, you know, I, the, to me, that survey data and the workshop data is like our backup. You know what I mean? It's the backup, it's the support for the things that we're putting in our, our LCP, our local conference of plan. But also there's some, there's some really good work that's already been done. So our, our sustainability work that we've done in town, that is it municipal vulnerability work, right? I think that it doesn't, I, I just found that the sustainability piece was, was missing some of that. I don't know why I felt that. But I thought that maybe you could look at that again.
Sure.
Because I think one of the most challenging, climate change is one of the most challenging things that we're going to be facing. And it, it just felt like, to me, it didn't have enough bullet points, you know? And I don't want to make up stuff, but I thought there was more, so that was one thing. The other thing is, I just want to make sure that we put, we put in there and we, you know, like with a brief summary, you know? For the water quality stuff, you know, we really need to put a brief summary of our hydrogen management plan, right? From 2015. You know, for us to sell, you know, we need to reference Dr. Howe's work. I mean, some of his quotes, you know, saying that, you know, we live the worst water in Massachusetts. We have the most impacted water in Massachusetts. That, that should be in there, you know, his stuff. All of that great work by us and O'Neill kind of should be briefly summarized and put in the, the corresponding chapter just because it supports that, you know?
That's something that I should have mentioned, is that one section that you don't see yet that is evolving is something that we're going to work with Evan on, is we're going to put a section in each chapter that talks about existing measures. So what is the town already doing or has already done? And we're going to summarize it. We just have, we haven't gotten to that yet and I, I did-
Great.
I should have, you reminded me when you said that. I should have mentioned that in the, in the overview, but we do, we do plan to do that. So if you have information that you want to make sure gets in there, please let, let Evan know or send it to me
Yeah.
directly, and we'll make sure that we touch upon those specific issues in that chapter.
Right, and I saw that in some of the chapters, you have a space with the survey results.
Yes.
Is something about that?
Yeah, so as I said, these are still working documents. We're still keeping these moving and we're, as we're evolving them. Some of them are a little bit further ahead of other chapters. They're not all running linear. So we are, we're continuing to, to update and add that information.
I'd like to make sure, we talked about nitrogen, but what about phosphate for the pods and stuff? I want to make sure that's in this way.
Absolutely.
We shouldn't have talked about that by the long convention.
Yeah, we got a clear, that survey result was clear. Seventy percent of the people surveyed want us to start addressing phosphorus pollution.
Yeah, we should.
Karen, did you have something?
Yeah, I was looking for trees. Is there an invention of trees I missed?
There is, I believe there's been a proposed action to develop a tree preservation bylaw. And there's also a discussion about street trees, street tree program. I can't remember what chapter I proposed including those in. I think they actually are, the street tree constellation, I think, is in transportation chapter as a streetscape. I think that's where I may put it, I don't recall, I haven't confirmed.
We're going to have a table of contents for this.
Yes.
Of course.
Yes, but let me confirm where, and I'll, I'll send you through expectations, at least what chapters I proposed various actions.
Okay.
I'm 99.99% confident I got this in there here.
Okay.
And if I'm not, I'm super sorry, I shouldn't remember.
You know, I'll take the mic back while Karen. So, let's see. The transportation piece, that was done by Beta?
Yes.
The actions, proposed actions, I, I wrote, tried to debate, they did the rest of the chapter. The transportation section is one of those very 1998 town council plan actions. I'd be a lot of that stuff stereo.
So it's, it's, Beta ready to make a presentation to us on that?
If, if that's what you'd like.
Yeah. I thought there was a lot to the transportation chapter. A lot. And I think that just because, you know, you had a subquad doctorate, right? And I, I'm wondering if they can do a presentation on that before we finalize that chapter.
Sure.
Because you've written, you and Evan have written all the other chapters, right?
They worked on sustainability, they helped with sustainability.
Well.
We started it and handed it off.
Do you, all right.
But they are the sole author for the transportation chapter.
I'm going to look real quick at sustainability. That's chapter three.
Those will, but these will probably get reorganized or renumbered as we decide in an order.
So is that, is that okay with you guys? Our next time we meet, let's have Beta come in
Sure.
and do the transportation and the sustainability piece, the chapters?
Sure.
They're very interesting and I'd love to have that added information.
Sure.
I'd say there's lots to consume.
Time.
Over the next couple of weeks, months, look at those policies and actions and let me know if I'm missing anything. If there's something that you feel is severely compromised or you've heard, or if you feel like there's something we should include. I want to make sure we're looking for something that we can build out the implementation table with.
Did you find that, to say, but it's a policy, but it's a goal?
Lot of the veterinary consultants tell me that.
When we first did the first bid, we thought for hours over this, what's a policy? Know that's an action, man. And then, and took for hours just to get-
I haven't had any internal struggle yet, Dennis, but I'm sure we're all going to get there at some point soon.
You know, it's so funny, Dennis, because I was like, that's an action, that's not a policy. And I was like, leave it alone, leave it alone. So there is this crossover, it almost like transitions.
It is, and the distinction is not always perfectly clear.
Yeah.
You have to think about, the actions are the easiest ones to identify. Those are things that you know, they, they get acted upon. There's some outcome that happens, or there's some initiative that's taken, or there's a plan that's written, there's a program that's designed, that, you know, there's a, there's something that happens from the action. The goals and policies are a little more murky in terms of where you draw that line between them. And that's why I gave you the slide to try to make that distinction a little bit better for you. I would recommend that if you're interested, and I can send this to Evan and he can send it to you. In Rhode Island, there is a handbook for every chapter of a comprehensive plan. They're much more regulated in Rhode Island than they are in Massachusetts. They have to get state approval, there's certain, the statewide planning approves the plans. There are certain things that they look for. If they don't find them in there, they send them back to you, you have to put them in there. So there's state involvement in the municipal plans in Rhode Island.
I think Kate, the commission's involved in this.
Is that really the standard?
Yes, very similar to that. There is a, there's a handbook for every chapter and there is a, there is a, I don't know what they label it as, but in that handbook, they go into great detail about the difference between a goal, a policy and an action. And actually they do a chart of typical words that you use to start a goal, to start a policy, to start an action. So I can send that to Evan, he can send that to you. You can take a look at that and hopefully that will kind of, you know, unblur those lines a little bit for you as you're reading through these.
I've been out of Rhode Island, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, right, you did some time in Rhode Island.
That's right. Could you pull out, you know, go through and get a cap on handing, that's really crystal clear to us? Goal?
Yes.
Policy, actions?
Sure.
Et cetera? Because the one you showed is a little murky for me.
Right, give me a second to-
And while she does that, I'm going to ask Evan a question about the HPP. So this, the housing list is like awesome, right? We do our HPP, how does, how does, how does our housing chapter in the LCP relate to the housing production?
I think the ambition of the housing chapter in the comprehensive plan is a higher level. It contributes to housing stock beyond what we can list on the SHI. So the goals, policies and actions in the comprehensive plan certainly will define how we structure and prioritize actions specifically the HPP to meet our targets established by the housing production plan, to meet our affordable housing goals specifically. So I, I think it's just a narrower part of the funnel. But certainly we need to be sure the goals, policies and actions that get adopted in the comprehensive plan are consistent with those we are going to transit over the housing production plan in any additional goals, policies and actions specifically for housing based on one of that HPP. And if there's a change, if we're going to be doing that housing production plan in a year, in five, 10 years when we update this again, we'll have the opportunity to readdress and make, and ensure that consistency continues.
Okay, did you have a mic back?
I'm good.
I'm, I'm good for tonight, I mean, I'm good for tonight. Does anybody else have any comments? I think that Dennis is asking, is there anybody from the public that has a comment? So I'm going to recognize Lynn. Evan, did she use your mic?
Sure, yeah. Lewis, go from there. Price is Right.
So name an address, please.
Lynn Barbie, Surf Drive. I guess I missed it if you said it, but maybe you could just go back. I, I like the way the, the survey results, you have, how are you going to report the workshop results? How is that going to look? How is that going to be organized? Because I didn't quite figure that out.
Well, we have, we have raw data. So typically what happens is all your raw data is in the appendixes.
It is.
Oh, yeah, I need that. It's, it's already typed in, right? So Evan, do you want to go forward and, because, because there was already a list of takeaways, right? I think we need some more detailed in those. But maybe Evan can talk about what to do with all the data that we collected at those workshops.
First, we'll make all those, that information available on plangashpee.com and through the planning board webpage. But in the document itself, all of the data, survey results, workshop findings will be summarized in a, in a chapter specifically to cover the engagement.
Oh, okay.
And then we'll include the actual flip charts, we'll include the survey results as, as appendices to the overall document. So if you want to get into the raw data, you know where to access it.
Hi, you named an address, thank you.
Hello, Colback, it's Ed, Algonquin Avenue. Following up on that is the plan that we have now, the draft plan with all the goals and policies. Is that going to be accessible to us through?
So anyways, I'll take that as true. Typically, I put this stuff out there, you know, right away. I think that we need to work on it a little bit just so it's not- I think that we need to work on it a little bit, just so it's not, there's not too many versions out there and it's not too confusing. And, um, again, Ashley and Evan are going to, they're going to kill me again, but I, I can't, I can't like finish the review until I see the analysis of the survey and the workshop stuff. I think that, I think it's okay to post the survey results. I think it's okay to post the raw data from the workshops right now. But this stuff has everything in it. I mean, it has stuff that I feel, you know, it's just, it's, it's almost too much. Would never be able to prioritize everything that's in here now. But you, you heard how that happened, right? We're, we're trying to capture everything, including from our last comprehensive plan, so that we don't forget anything, so that, you know, the town can whittle that down and, and not go, oh, we forgot that, you know what I mean?
Yes.
Do you have any follow-up comment on that? I do, I do imagine that when we get it to our final draft, that there'll be, you know, a comment period, there'll be a big presentation. I'm assuming there's going to be a, a comment period. I mean, typically, plans like annual plans get a comment period of 30 days. I don't think that's long enough for this, because it wasn't updated since 1998, right? So we might want to give it six weeks or eight weeks, but I don't want to drive Evan into national crisis. You're welcome, sir.
Evan, are we going to give any power to this to the Cape Cod Commission? To see, you know, establish a tone right at the end, and then give it to them?
100%, we can do a couple hours of edits with the board.
Yeah.
But yes, we want to get early drafts of this to the commission, get early comments, so we don't run into trouble later.
Okay.
So Evan, explain to everybody, why is it so important? What's the Cape Cod Commission look at?
So, the, the Cape Cod Commission has regulations that apparently pertain to the development of local comprehensive plans, and the Cape Cod Commission, like Rhode Island statewide planning, has to certify that the comprehensive plan is consistent with the regional policy plan, which was recently updated, which really brought to the fore the necessity to go through this particular process. So the town, once the planning board develops the plan, adopts the plan, it'll go to the select board for adoption. After the select board adopts the plan, it'll be submitted to the Cape Cod Commission for review. The commission accepts it, then we'll go to town meeting for adoption.
So you, you can see how, you know, Dennis and Evan, you know, they've been promoting this idea, you know, let's give them a draft to look at before, probably even before we have our public comment period here in town. So that we're on the right track with them, you know, get their comments early, because we have a debate, we wouldn't want it to go to the board's office and get approved there, and then the Cape Cod Commission bump it back to us for some technical reason.
Yes.
Anybody else from the public that would like to say something at this time? Any other board members? Evan, Ashley is...
I'll just say for the chair, thank you that everyone has participated in the process so far. It's been quite a year, we're in...
Ashley, I'm just about to ask you, you're in a German, is there anything that you would like to say in conclusion?
So, are you going to show us?
Yes, she does. Oh, yes, thank you.
Oh, thank you. So Karen asked for a clear example, and I'll read you from the housing chapter. The goal is ensure that sustainable practices are integrated into all housing development decisions to create a safer and healthier community. That's high level. The policy that would be associated with that is to implement sustainable building practices for all new construction and redevelopment. It's kind of like one level down, it's a little more specific, but it doesn't give you something...
Not an action.
Doesn't give you something to actually go do.
Yeah.
Then there are two related actions. One is restrict development in the flood zone. The other one is identify suitable sites for infill development outside of the flood zone. So those are two specific things that you can take and do something with.
That's clear.
That go back to the policy that goes back to the action. Does that help?
Yes, that's a good one. It's very clear, that other one that we had on the screen.
Was really clear.
Glad you were on the team, all right.
I think I'm mostly a jury.
All the papers, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
On this very night.